Call the meeting to order. Start with the pledge of allegiance.
I wrote the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prayer for assistance. Dear Lord, bless all our actions and carry them on by Thy gracious assistance, so that every prayer and good work of ours may begin from Thee and by Thee be happily ended. Throughout Christ our Lord, amen. Good evening, everyone.
Yep, all right. Rob Nider is not here. Joe Von Sass?
Here.
Tim Clunk?
Here.
Donna Spangler, not here. Keith Luder?
Here.
Tom Snyder?
Here.
Steve Pascoe?
Here.
All right. We're missing two, but we do have a quorum. To have a motion for approval of January 10th, 2024, meeting minutes.
I make a motion, we approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second. Is there any questions on the meeting minutes? All right, go ahead.
All right, Joe Von Sass?
Yes.
Tim Clunk?
Yes.
Keith Luder?
Yes.
Tom Snyder?
Yes.
Steve Pascoe?
Yes.
All right. Announcements and communications.
I don't really have much from, the only thing I would say was, um, our Public Works guys did a great job with the snow. They were here like three storms in a row there, and we didn't have too, too many complaints, but I do want to make the public aware that if you have something that you want to bring to our attention, please call us. I think a lot of the times people assume we, we know about a problem and we don't handle it. But like, for instance, recently we had someone, um, call us and tell us the senior center sign, the community center sign was hanging by one chain instead of both. And we sent one of our Public Works guys to fix it right away. So please just call us and tell us if there's something you want us to, you know, make attention to. So that's it.
Okay. Would anyone like to add to that?
Yeah.
Bill, you had, you had made a comment.
Well, yeah, I think, I think they did a wonderful job. In fact, as I saw him the other day and told him. But there is a few things that could be a little better, but they don't know, so you can't expect it. And some of it was pushing the back further after the snow was over. They just take another round and push it closer to the curb. And also, a couple of times it was, uh, it got sloppy in the afternoons and they couldn't push something out all.
Cleaned, cleaned a little bit better, cleaned up after.
Yeah, that's what I could say.
Well, that'll be, we'll pass that on. Anyone else comment?
I, I have a different subject I'd like to make a comment on. I just think that everyone on the council needs to know. When I ran for borough council, I said I was going to be the voice of the people, and I intend to be that. And when we took our oath, we swore it uphold the laws of the state, the country, and do our best for the borough of McSherrystown. Well, I was sitting in the office here the other day discussing stuff with Jess, and the mayor happened to come in and made a statement that, she was asked by one of us that she was writing these emails that we're getting, because it doesn't seem like her style. And she said, with four witnesses there, that she is getting help writing her emails. So in my opinion, this is putting our information in hands where it does not belong. Someone that was not sworn into office and
Isn't an employee.
Isn't an employee of the boroughs. And I'd just like to know, you know, she's not here to defend herself, but I'd like to know who's helping her write these emails. That is putting probably public knowledge at risk. So I just thought that's something that everybody on the board should know, because not everyone was here to hear her say it.
I heard a rumor about that, and what I'd heard was that she said it sarcastically.
I don't think we should go off a rumor.
Right, we're not, I'm just saying.
No.
We, did she say it sarcastically?
No, she did not say it sarcastically.
Those are the things that, yeah.
I mean, I almost bit my tongue off when it was said, I'm thinking.
I'm, I'm reading emails as well from mayor, and it doesn't seem like, the way she speaks, like, like it would possibly be someone else writing them for her. So that's concerning to me as well. Okay. Anyone else?
And just to make everyone aware, it wasn't four council members here that day.
It was two council members and two office employees heard the statement. And I don't know if the office employees thought it was sarcastic or not, but I thought it was, she was speaking the truth out, you know, just came right out with it, not thinking what she was saying, but she said it.
Okay.
That could possibly be a security risk.
All righty.
And also about the open seat. We're set, I forgot.
Yeah, we're, we're not quite there yet.
Oh.
Yeah, next thing is, uh, public comment. Is that correct? All right, um, public comment time. Bob Miller?
Good evening.
Good evening. Right up.
Right here.
Yeah, there's a microphone right there, so we want to make sure everybody hears you.
Here?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. All right, uh, for those of you who don't know me, just allow me to introduce myself. My name's Bob Miller. I own a property at 335 Main Street, which is directly across the street here. Uh, owned that for 35 years. Primarily known as the office of Miller Brown Owman Associates, certified by public accountants. I personally am retired now, but the office is still there. Purpose of my media, or my presence tonight is to remind council something that I brought here several years ago. Issue, and then recently I had some communications with the current mayor, so I just felt I should come to the, uh, to the meeting to emphasize. My concern is, and the issue that I brought up, is traffic control at the intersections of Third and Main Street. Uh, this has been a problem. Anybody's been around here, I've been here, like I said, I own the property over for 35 years. I've seen, uh, the traffic, uh, issues at that intersection. That's one of the main intersections across Main Street. And at times, it's very, very difficult, and I think quite unsafe. Uh, I brought this to council several years ago. Uh, asked that it be, uh, investigated, looked into. Shortly thereafter, I really did not hear much more about it. Now, having a new, uh, council membership here and a new mayor, I thought it might be time to bring it back again, uh, to make you aware. I know there's been a lot of talk about the fact that we've got this pending issue of Eisenhower Drive extension. A lot of people think that's going to cure all ills, uh, for Main Street, McSherrystown. I don't think it's going to. We're still going to have problems there. Uh, there's been a lot of controversy and, well, I shouldn't say controversy. There's been a lot of talk with people I've spoken with about that intersection. And it can't, you can't put a light there, you, this and that and one thing, whatever. I just bring your, uh, as a point of reference, another intersection, it's not in the borough, but nearby, uh, which is in Mount Pleasant. Very similar type intersection, a little bit, obviously a little more traffic, but, uh, that same road, Mount Pleasant Road and Estate Road over there, uh, Route 194. Um, and for obviously many, many years, there was no traffic control there. A light was placed there quite a few years ago, I don't know, maybe 10 years ago now, I'm not exactly sure how long. That, and, and I go through that intersection several times a day most, well, until I recently retired. But, uh, that has significantly improved that intersection. People know they can get through there, uh, in a reasonable time. I think a lot of people, a lot of the other congestion of intersections on Main Street or off of Main Street are because of people trying to cross at other places, because they know it's such a challenge at Third Street. If there was control there, people knew it, I think they would utilize that. And I would just like to ask council again to, uh, you know, do something about it. I know there's procedures you've got to go through, but if somebody doesn't start and push and ask and try to work on it, it's never going to happen. That's what's been happening for 30 some years. Was there some deaths up there a number of years ago? There should have been, uh, action taken back then, and it wasn't. Uh, so here we are 30 some years later and it still hasn't been dealt with. Uh, so I'm asking council to consider it and to investigate it. And by the way, there wasn't, and I don't know if who all was copied on it, I think the chief police was copied on it. But I spoke to Mayor Hagerman. She did address, uh, an email to the county about it, asking if anything had been done as a follow-up to my prior request. And she, to my knowledge, uh, she indicated she would reply to me if she got any information. I haven't heard a reply. I'm going to presume she hasn't heard anything. But I did too, just as a point of reference. You know, all this stuff has to go through this organization called ACPO, uh, here in Pennsylvania, in the county. That kind of controls, uh, all the action with the state and so forth. There's absolutely nothing on their future plans. I've looked at that, what's on their website and so forth. There's nothing on their plans, uh, to do anything with regard to Main Street. So I'm just asking council, it's, it's our responsibility, it's our issue here in our borough. We don't speak up, you know, I use a phrase, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, okay? I think we need to be squeaking here. We need help in, in McSherrystown on those issues. That's my point. Thank you, council.
Thank you. You're not a member of ACPO?
Not personally, no.
Okay. Bill, are you, are you on ACPO?
No. I have to go to my friends.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. All right, yeah, that, um, well, I guess, I guess you've started it again, so, um, the mayor and the chief of police, we can probably, um, ask them how, how things are going too, and if there's anything else that, that we need to do to, you know, push it along. So we'll definitely, we'll definitely keep on top of it.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And I think the residents and people who travel through would, would appreciate it as well. Thank you.
Especially the triax will drop.
All types of traffic, yes. Thank you very much.
Mr. Miller, I have one question.
He's right.
I'm sorry.
No, I was saying, I was talking, um, Linda, I, I understand what you're saying. I always cheat and cut through that alley right before you get there, so.
Question and half.
I agree with these, with the same.
Okay, but the question and half for you is, uh, was it a speed, a speed an issue? Or what's, what's an issue with that particular intersection?
The issue, I think, is just getting through there at certain times of the day when traffic is heavy, you know, just making the turns and so forth, the, you know, the backups and everything. And you can sit there and sometimes you go out there and, and you're obviously, you're, you're taking your, you're taking your life in your hands as people, many people go out. And again, I experienced that same type of situation for many, many years at Mount Pleasant. Um, I went through there a lot. I would avoid that at times, you know, because of the circumstance. But now, with the traffic control that is there, you know, when you get there within a matter of 30 seconds, a minute or so, you're going to get through.
Yeah.
Okay, and so the, the safety, uh, and they, and they've put up some new, recently within the last two years, they've put some additional, newer controllers on that light over there that have really improved it. And, um, so, you know, it's, you can pass through there with some feeling of relative safety. I'll put it that way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just to reiterate that, um, his, for those that don't know, I'm Linda, I am the clerk typist, but I am also the crossing guard for the district at that intersection. And I will tell you, that intersection is horrible. I have expressed a concern to our former chief of police, um, slash manager. I have also talked into, have talked to Matt Muller, who is safety director for the town, or for the school district. I myself sat there in the mornings when I get done crossing. I've sat there almost 10 minutes at a time, just to get across to come to the office, versus the same thing in the afternoon going across. I have seen so many cars, and I've talked to several different, um, ways about it, when they're stopped either direction, they, cars go out around them. So like he's saying, like, you're taking a life into your own hands. You don't know at that intersection when it's safe to cross and when it's not, because you don't know what car is coming out from either car that's on Main Street coming. So it is a very, very dangerous intersection. And there's other people that have been contacted in regards to that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on that, on that subject? Okay. All right. Next person is Gina Di Moreno.
Hi, I, um, most of you guys know me, some of you don't. I have lived in around McSherrystown pretty much all my life. I went to school here in McSherrystown. About, oh, I guess about 16, 12 months to 16 months ago, I started coming back around McSherrystown because I've wanted, I have a project that I'm going to do here in McSherrystown. Um, that, that's nothing but approving the area. During that time, um, I met some lovely people, um, in a card game. And to, to night, I'm here and I just want to say, wow, this last month has been, a breath of fresh air compared to what I've been dealing with for the last 12 months. I mean, when I can make one phone call to the borough office and get a response, I was just absolutely blown away. I was stonewalled by the last councilman's. The borough manager, um, I, I'm not really sure how or why he was getting away with some of the things that he did. All I can say was nothing short of criminal. But I say that where I'm moving forward, in, in just four weeks, you guys have helped me with my, our project. We're, we're going forward. And we are, uh, I feel like, you know, we have a shot of bringing our, our, one of our homes here in the McSherrystown area. I also am very enthusiastic about the seniors. I mean, I have some councilmen helping. We're going to get these seniors back where they belong, and they should have never been taken out of the senior center. I'm looking and researching the grants, because apparently there are 40 hours that are reserved for, I don't know if I've spoken to anybody about this, there are 40 hours reserved for the seniors, which this club only really needs four hours a month, four or five hours a month is all they ever needed. And so, um, my foundation actually helps with their food and, um, and I don't, I don't know if that, if there'll be a, um, uh, an amount that needs to be paid, but if, if so, we, we have no problems doing that. We've already applied for the licensing, so we're on our way. And, and that, I had such obstacles even having people return phone calls to me. And within a month, we're moving and we're, we're getting things done. And I'm, I'm very appreciative and thank you, Jess, um, for helping us, uh, keep communication. I think the biggest problem was communication. They shut everybody down. They, they dictated what was going to happen and no one had a say. But it's been nothing but good. Um, the communication is awesome. I mean, I'm even having agencies calling me back where they were told not to have contact with me. And so I really appreciate it, and I wanted to say, great job, you guys, and, um, I'm looking to, to the future.
And a card party, thank you.
And a what?
And a card party.
Yep, and a big card party, a real big one.
Thank you, Gina.
All right. Did anyone forget to sign the signup sheet for public comment? Oh, come on. Okay. Moving on. New business. First item is acceptance, acceptance of resignation of council member Donna Spangler. Can we get a motion for that?
I make a motion to accept Donna Spangler's resignation.
I think he beat you.
Oh. Sorry.
And second?
Second.
He, he was thinking about it.
He's going about it.
Okay, Jess, good to do roll call.
Yep, uh, Joe Von Sass?
Yes.
Tim Clunk?
Yes.
Keith Luder?
Yes.
Tom Snyder?
Yes.
Steve Pascoe?
Yes.
All right. That one's done. Okay. Second item is approval of IT contract with Cyber Guardian Solutions. Do you motion on that?
I make a motion to approve that contract, Cyber Guardian Solutions.
And second?
Am I allowed to ask a question first?
Oh.
Ask a question too.
You can certainly ask a question after, after, because it was, the motion was already.
Started.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yeah, certainly. So is there a second? Okay, all right.
I was, I was just going to say, how long is the contract for?
Just to.
And there was, it, that wasn't.
It's an open end.
Okay.
Okay. Wasn't specified.
Now, I'm pretty sure this is, would be considered a simple contract if, you know, if they, if they're not fulfilling, you know, it, it'll get, they will be removed and then, you know, act upon another IT. You Keith?
Oh, um, so they, on that, because of that. I think the question was answered on one of these. They, um, in other words, they, they go through all their background checks and everything.
Well, the police, the police will do the background check on, on that, correct?
Nope.
They wanted, this is, this is a company that does other, that does cybersecurity for other, other towns. They do townships and boroughs, or?
They've worked with a couple of other police departments, and then they've also worked with, they're saying here, some, some banking institutions, several businesses, um, yeah, and townships. Their township, they, you can do the website hosting, email management with that. They've also got, they're certified with partners with Microsoft and a couple of other ones that we use as well. All ready.
So they're, they're a good fit for us.
Yes, but there's no requirements for that, right? Am I right?
Requirement.
As far as, in other words, they have to have clearance as well, or?
Yes.
And but the, does, in other words, in each of those townships, do they have to get clearance from each one? Including us, do we have to do a, a check on them as well?
That can ease, that, we can certainly do that.
I'm saying, do we have to? Do we do it? And do we have to do it?
Uh, with Dave, with the, with the former, with the former IT guy, Felch's, he had been, he had been with the town, with the borough for quite a few years, and I, I have no idea what, what he had to go through, or if he was just, if he was just hired to do the IT and that was that.
I would say it would be who else to do that, true?
Yeah.
That's something that could be done before or after the contract is signed.
Yep. Yeah. So if you, if you want to make a contingent that, that he passes.
Right, no, yeah, and I just, like I said, I just, I was wondering, I'm thinking, wait a minute, do they, do they go through all these checks or do, you know?
Well, working with other police departments, you would certainly think that they, they've already been screened.
Is, yeah, okay, well.
But if you want to, if you, if you would like to make an addendum to that, addendum to that.
No, my, my, my question is, is that, do they have to do it? Is it a requirement? So if it's a requirement, are we bringing them in contingent that, assuming that they're going to go ahead and pass? And are things going to be okay? Or do we just, you know, do we wait for?
I think the solicitor, you just answered that.
Yeah, the borough is not specifically required to.
That's my question.
It's never a bad.
Right, okay, if it's not required, then we're good.
Okay.
The answer.
So we went through with the, uh, the motion and the second, and we're just going to.
Yeah.
Continue on?
Thank you.
Okay. Very good.
Ready for me?
Roll call, please.
Joe Von Sass?
Yes.
Tim Clunk?
Yes.
Keith Luder?
Yes.
Tom Snyder?
Yes.
Steve Pascoe?
Yes.
The next item is the approval of resolution 2024-05.
04.
04?
04.
Yep, I'm sorry, 04. The local share assessment grant. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve that.
I'll second it.
All right. Any questions? This is, did, did you get that?
I got it late, but.
Okay, that's for a grant for the police department to do some specific items, to, to purchase specific items. And if you, well.
Oh, okay, oh. Now, on that, when you say, um, you're getting specific items, is, is that for the police department?
For the police, for the police.
Um, the only question I would have on that is, what are the qualifications of the people ordering that? In other words, what, give me an idea of what we would be purchasing.
Well, it's on the, it's on the.
It's on the, on the paperwork there.
It's on the resolution, and it has to do with.
Can I talk about this real quick and just?
Pardon?
Is it okay if I just tell them what the difference is?
Yeah, if you want to just read it off, that.
We actually had a resolution that was signed November 22nd of 2023. And, um, in that resolution, the past president, council president was in there, that he was given the official authority to execute all documents and agreements. And all we're doing with this one is just changing the new council president's name in it.
Removing.
Because it has to be changed or they can't move forward with that grant. That's all we're doing with this resolution.
So clerical change, basically. All right.
And I'm, I'm not trying to be a hard knuckle guy here. I just want to make sure I understand. I don't want to just sit here and go, yes, yes, yes. I think that everybody should understand what it is they're okay to. And so I'm just bold enough, if I don't understand it, I'm going to ask.
All right.
Joe.
Okay.
Ready?
Great.
All right, Joe Von Sass?
Yes.
Tim Clunk?
Yes.
Keith Luder?
Yes.
Tom Snyder?
Yes.
Steve Pascoe?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is approval of resolution 2024-05, adopting a building access policy. Do I have a motion for that?
Make a motion to approve that.
Second?
Second. All right. Any questions? I'm sure you have a lot of questions on that.
You were right at me when I said that. My only question on that one, I, I think you answered it, and I just wanted to make sure that we're considering safety, safety for, um, our people in uniform that are here. So that was my questioning on that, because I didn't get a full understanding when you talked about access. I heard about keys and things like that, and so, you know, it's just, that's all I heard. Who has the, in other words, who has the access, access where?
Yep, the, in your, in your folder.
Okay.
Did you pull all the paperwork out of your?
I pulled everything out. This is the access policy right here.
2405. It, it's pretty explanatory. It's very, it's, it's a very good, well-written.
Very plain.
So you can, you can see for yourself what we're. We're not, we're, the police department is separate from the borough office, and we're keeping it that way. The other, one of the, one of the other items is going to be that council members will have, will be issued a key fob to be able to get in and out of the building. That will give accountability, rather than just having a key. So, um, you know, there's a couple of other things in that that's going to, that's limiting, uh, who can come into the building and have access behind the scenes.
When you say who, is, when you say who, does that mean certain, certain council members or all council members?
All council members are, 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 it's legal for all council members to be able to gain access to the borough office. If there was some kind of an emergency, you know, it, there's, there's quite a few different reasons why you would, would come in, but, um, But, um, with the key fobs, you're gonna have, you, you're gonna be, it's gonna be datified that you're, that you came in.
Okay, that, that makes sense. Only, like I said, my only concern on that was, when I, when I heard of this, I thought, okay, does this mean you have, um, one of the policemen bringing someone in the building with handcuffs? Are any council members around that area where they're at? That puts them in danger as well as, you know, puts everybody in danger there. That was my question. In other words, are they crossing paths? You got, while, meanwhile, Chief Ke, Ke, Kitzville is bringing someone in here in handcuffs and you walk in the door.
I would think.
There's a, there's an issue there.
He wouldn't be bringing someone, uh, in here, council chambers or in this out handcuffs. He should be bringing.
Right, all her access and keys. And, and the borough owns the building.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that means that you have your key. Are you capable of walking through there, meanwhile, he's got someone in handcuffs?
You are not.
No, I, I don't know why.
That, I'm just saying, that was the.
Yeah.
Our access.
We wanna make sure it's over all that. They're just not walking through anyway because you got the key.
Our access is to this half of the building. The police have access to that half and we do not have access to that half. So it's.
So is your access, well, our access is just to this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's to be, that's to be talked about, 'cause.
All right. Yeah.
We don't have access to this door as of yet.
And what's behind that door?
The fenced-in police.
Okay, with someone in the car. And if I have access to that and there's someone in the car and here we are, or he pulls up, we have danger, we, that, that's, that's a situation that's not good.
Yeah, that is gonna be corrected down the road.
But I would like to see how that's gonna be corrected before we even board. That doesn't.
Well, that's, that's not.
That doesn't sit well with me, that's.
Technically, that is not, that is not our access point. That is an emergency exit only.
Right, but then I don't think that we should have access to that until we clear that up. Again, my concern is.
That's not.
Putting people in danger there. That's just not, it's just not good. I understand what you're saying, but it's, it's, that's, that's not good.
Correct me if I'm wrong, is that this resolution is?
Director of dislisting.
This resolution is not for this back door, it's for every, every place else. Correct. Okay.
So the keys, so the keys that's coming up won't, there won't be a key there?
No, you, you, we can't gain access to the outside of that door.
Yeah, we can't get in the gate, so there's, this is a non-issue.
That was my verisim question. We won't, then we won't have access to that as of yet.
Yeah, we.
Correct.
Correct. It's not for that door.
This is an exit only.
Yeah.
And that would be, that would be utilized in an emergency.
So good.
Good with that? To, we're, we may redress that issue later after the policy is, uh, passed. But also at the same time, um, anything, anything could change, but it adds accountability. That's the main thing. It adds accountability to who, where, though everywhere in the building. Yep. And it's something to build on.
All right.
All right, um. Roll call.
Need a motion.
No, we've already, we've already had a motion in a second.
Joe Von Sass?
Yes.
Tim Clunk?
Yes.
Keith Luter?
Yes.
Tom Snyder?
Yes.
Steve Pascoe?
Yes.
All right. All righty. Make a motion to table approval to advertise the twenty twenty-four budget at this time. Is there any motions?
Make a motion for that.
Okay.
I'll second the motion to table the, uh, budgeting affairs.
All righty. Any questions?
Sorry.
Nope, he's good. Go ahead.
Joe Von Sass?
Yes.
Tim Clunk?
Yes.
Keith Luter?
Yes.
Tom Snyder?
Yes.
Steve Pascoe?
Yes.
All right. Any, before, before we, uh, adjourn, is there any, anyone that would like to throw anything out there yet? Snowball? Go ahead, go ahead.
Did yous, uh, have intention of advertising or putting it out for?
Yes, yes, sir.
Or, you know, for, for letters for?
Yeah, to re, to replace, to replace our resigning council. Uh, yes. Wanna invite everyone that's interested to put an application into McSherry's Town Borough Office if they would like to, uh, file to be, uh, replacement council for, um, our vacant seat. We're gonna have, when are we gonna have that? We're gonna close that, or we're, actually, we're gonna vote on that this next, the next meeting. And that would be?
Fourteenth.
The fourteenth.
February fourteenth.
February fourteenth. So, um, let's say. Let's say we close it, um, on the thirteenth or, or do we, do we need to, um, use the thirteenth for, uh, well, yeah, we could use the thirteenth for personnel session.
Close it on the twelfth, I would say.
We'll close it on the twelfth. February twelfth, the, uh, the applications will be shut down. Got a nice seat waiting for him right there. Yes, sir.
Uh, just, just a little comment here. On Main Street, down by Third Street at the church, there's one of the, I guess it's a water cover. Hats off, and it was laying on the sidewalk there someplace.
A water cover?
I don't know if that would fall for the, the water company or what.
You, is it, is it a small diameter?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that would be the curb stop. That, that's, uh, Hannover Borough. So we can make a note of that. Actually, Jessica can make a note of that. On top of everything else, she can contact the water, water company about that. Anything else?
Do we know where the lid is?
Is, is the cover still laying there?
I'm not certain.
Okay.
That was a week or so ago. The hole's still there, but I didn't notice the.
The cover laying.
Ford laying there.
Okay, so we need a replacement.
Yeah.
It was up on the sidewalk, but I don't know, it's still here.
Okay. Very good. Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. Motion to adjourn. Anyone? You want to stack?
Motion to, motion to adjourn.
Okay. All right. Meeting is adjourned.